Ms. Westing, welcome to the interview with the board. You are candidate number one that's interviewing. We have a total of 22 questions. We are going to go around and we will do the five, each board member will ask five questions, and there'll be five questions in a row for each board member. So Mr. Brown will start with the first five. Mr. Schwartz will do the second five, and then myself, and then Ms. Schenck. And then you have an hour and 15 minutes to spend with us. And we will kick it off and get started right away. And this is live streamed. And then afterwards, just to remind folks, the board will be deliberating tomorrow at 2:00, and that will be an executive session. So.
Will somebody keep track of time for me or give me a time check?
Yes, I can give you a time check.
Well, thank, thank you for having me. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to interview for this position. It's been an honor serving as the interim superintendent these last several months. I did prepare an entry plan for you, and you have those in front of you. I'll speak to much of that, hopefully, in my answers to the questions that you'll ask me, but I wanted you to have that to look at as well.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Brown, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, start with number one.
What should be the top priorities for Lewis Palmer School District in the coming year, and how do you envision those evolving over the next five years?
Ultimately, the number one priority is to ensure that our students are learning, thriving, and coming to school in a safe and healthy environment. So that really is the focus of our strategic priorities, one and two, within our strategic plan. And in the first year, you'll see within the entry plan that I've provided you that I've already begun to reset a very laser-like focus on student learning since assuming the role in February. I've worked with our principal team and our instructional leaders across the district to reset our instructional framework that includes all of the components necessary for students to be successful academically, but also to thrive as whole beings. So that is work that is beginning and is planned to continue as we approach the beginning of next school year by taking that framework out for feedback to all of our teaching staff across the district. As far as creating a safe and healthy environment for our students, our team with strategic plan priority one has set very clear and specific goals for continuing to ensure that our facilities are safe and that our students are well-cared-for in collaboration with our families to make sure that every student feels valued, welcomed, and safe at school every single day. My priority will be to work with the board, along with our executive leadership team, to monitor the goals and priorities that we have in place within our strategic plan and to continue to evaluate if they are the correct priorities and to monitor our progress on each of the measures that we've set within each of those priority areas. I have outlined a plan to conduct a retreat with the Board of Education in June or July where we can revisit our current actions within these priorities, look at where our current success is, and where we have some opportunities for improvement. As we look to five years from now, because our strategic plan is set to expire in 2027, we would continue to update those actions and measures over the course of the next five years, identifying new opportunities for our district to serve our customers, our students, and our families well, looking at what are the expectations of our current students and families, but also how can we capture new customers and what might be the demands of our educational system into the future.
Anybody want to do any follow-up questions?
Nope, go ahead. Number two.
What draws you to this, excuse me, what draws you to this opportunity and what excites you most about leading Lewis Palmer School District?
Well, first I'll speak about what drew me to the position as assistant superintendent four years ago, and I had the pleasure of interviewing at that time with Mr. Schwartz when I became a finalist for that position. I knew when that position opened that this is where I wanted to be, and particularly because of the high value our community places on education and the high level of support that we have from our families and our community for taking care, the best care of our students, the wonderful students that, that we have, and particularly the challenge of maintaining such a high level of standard for the academic and well-being of our students. And those are the same criteria that draw me to wanting to become the superintendent in Lewis Palmer School District. I have thoroughly enjoyed serving as both acting superintendent last spring and interim superintendent currently, and I love this community. I want to fully immerse myself in the community with our schools, support our principals and our teachers, and be a fierce advocate for all of the good things that we are doing in Lewis Palmer School District.
Moving right along, yes. Can you share an example of a difficult or uncomfortable decision you've made as a leader? How did you approach it, and what, if anything, would you do differently?
There are lots of difficult decisions that have to be made on a regular basis. Let me think about one in particular. We are currently looking very carefully at our staffing structures, working very closely with our principal teams and our district leadership team to evaluate how we can continue to focus on increasing staff compensation. And so as we do that, we are looking very carefully at our current staffing structures, and when we have opportunities through attrition, we are evaluating if there are any creative and innovative approaches that we can take to still serve our students very well and also improve our efficiency so that we can continue to prioritize compensation for staff. I think part of your question was what would we do differently? We recently did make a decision to move some staff members into positions that were vacated, and through that process, we thought that we had clearly communicated, and we thought that we were fully transparent, and we learned through that process that we could have communicated better by sharing better the rationale and, the rationale and the rationale for the decision, I guess I'll just say. And we've learned that we could have better heard each voice that was involved in that decision more intentionally. And so when I think about missteps that we make as leaders, almost always, they come down to communication, either not listening enough or not communicating clearly enough. And so that's something I'm always reflecting on as a leader and asking for feedback about so that we can continually improve our relationships with our staff and our community.
Number four is going to be, can you describe a long-term initiative you've led? How did you maintain momentum, and is the work still making a positive impact?
I'll share a couple of different examples. When I think about my past experience, I led district-wide in much larger district than ours, strategic planning efforts that were based on national criteria for successful organizations. This work occurred, really, I would say, over the course of about 10 years, introducing the criteria, presenting the why behind wanting to improve all of the operations across the district, from student achievement results to operational effectiveness. And through that process, there was much communication about, again, the rationale for why we would want to use a national quality criteria to help move our district forward, providing training to folks, providing time to folks to come together to learn about the criteria and to set goals for implementation, visiting other school districts and organizations across the state, and also learning from organizations across the country who had made significant improvements with the implementation of their strategic plan. And through all of that process, I am very proud to say that the district is still working through those processes and implementing those strategies as of today. Here in Lewis Palmer School District, upon, upon receiving my role as assistant superintendent, we embarked on the implementation of a new literacy curriculum for all of our elementary schools, and this was the first time that the board had invested in a single approach to reading instruction across our elementary schools. So four years later, after much professional development, working closely with principals, reviewing data, working with instructional coaches to ensure that there was day-to-day embedded professional development, but also accountability to implementing that curriculum with fidelity, we are very much still implementing that curriculum. And not only that, this year, we spent time with teachers representing all of our elementary schools and grade levels, reevaluating the effectiveness of our approach so far, looking at what we may need to do to supplement any of our strategies and approaches so that we can carry on our work to the next level beginning next school year.
All right, the next section we're going to move on to is around governance and relationships. So question number five is, how do you define the ideal working relationship between the superintendent and the Board of Education, and what about with school and district leaders?
Can you repeat the last part of that question, please?
Yeah, I'll just do the whole thing. How do you define the ideal working relationship between the superintendent and the Board of Education, and then what about with the school and district leaders?
As superintendent, my role is to be the bridge between the day-to-day operational leadership of the school district and the board's governance responsibility. And I believe strongly that to be effective together, we must have collaboration and accurate and timely communication among each other. I would see us really working as a team to carry out our strategic plan, our district policies, and ultimately, our vision to elevate every student every day. As far as our district leaders, they really serve, our executive team in particular, serve as the content experts in each area that they lead, and I rely on them to be advisors to me and ultimately to the Board of Education as well, but also knowing that I am fully responsible for the leadership of the school district as the superintendent and the board's only sole employee. I would expect the board to hold me accountable for delivering results based on your direction and the goals and priorities that we set together within the strategic plan.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. What support or conditions from the board would enable you to be most effective in a superintendent role?
Some of those things I, I just mentioned. So communication, I would hope for a no-surprises culture among us. I believe I've done a good job informing all of you whenever there is a particular situation that would be important for you to be aware of, that we are managing as a leadership team. I would hope that you would fully support me in providing me with information that you might be aware of across the school district so that I and the team can be fully aware of particular challenges that we may need to navigate together. Can you ask the question one more time, Mr. Schwartz?
Sure can. What support or types of conditions from the board, meaning working conditions, would enable you to be most effective in the superintendent role?
Okay, I'll mention accountability again. I cited that with the last question, but I do believe that accountability helps us all perform well, and so clear expectations as we work together on setting goals within the strategic plan, for listening to our community, and for being good stewards of our taxpayer investment, as well as upholding the values and expectations that our community has for us.
Thank you. Ready for the next question?
I'm ready.
Okay. What strategy will you use to maintain transparent, respectful, and productive communications with the board while honoring our governance boundaries?
Some of the things I'm currently doing are communicating one-on-one with each of you when there is a particular need. I have also implemented a Friday bulletin that outlines all of the high-level activities that I and the team are working on, in addition to upcoming community events and opportunities for the board to engage in our schools. I think being able to disagree respectfully is very important, and I have had the opportunity to have discussions with some of you when we don't always agree, but ultimately, I respect the authority of the board and the decisions you make. And I also, at the same time, prior to those decisions being made, I believe my job is to advise you well, to provide you with accurate and timely information so that you can make the best decisions you all can together.
Thank you. Just going to give her a sec to get her notes down. Ready?
Yes.
All right. How will you ensure that staff, families, students, and community members feel heard and included in shaping our district's direction?
So I'll speak a little bit about staff first. We have multiple strategies we're currently using to engage with our employees. One is our Staff Collaboration Committee, which meets about monthly and has representation across all employee groups. This is something we're looking, it's in, it's, just ending its second year in existence at this time, and we're looking through getting feedback from our employees on some improvements we can make to the structures within that group and also the representation as we move into next school year. But this is a way that staff, again, across all employee groups, can be a voice back to their schools and departments and advise us as district leaders on key decisions that we're making for the school district, including our staff compensation and benefits. As far as our, well, let me keep talking about staff for a moment. Another key strategy that we have deployed is the practice of rounding. Currently, we're calling, calling these listening tours, visiting each of our schools and departments to listen and give an opportunity for any staff member at all that would like to speak with us to tell us what's going well, if they have the resources they need to do their job, how can we improve as an organization, how can we value them, and then also asking, who can we recognize who is carrying out our district values and going above and beyond to help us meet our, our vision and mission. We also strive to include all of these stakeholder groups, staff, students, parents, and community members on a multitude of committees. Anytime that we are considering a big decision, I believe it's important to include as many voices as possible. One recent example is our Graduation Requirements Task Force that met throughout the school year this year and included students, staff, parents, and community members, and we looked very closely at our current requirements, we analyzed surrounding district requirements, and ultimately presented some recommendations to the board at a recent work session that includes continuing to examine the, this policy in particular as we move into next school year. There are multiple examples of committees like this. Our Arts Education Advisory Council has had all of these stakeholders involved, and I think what is, one thing I'm really proud of is that these committees don't just meet, but they have tangible outcomes. The Arts Education Advisory Council, as an example, was able to this year, and bring back our district-led arts showcase, as well as launch a community-wide calendar of performing arts events, and we are just getting ready to have our first-ever performing and fine arts recognition evening that will be similar to an athletic signing event, and that all came from these stakeholders and their, their voices being heard, and then also their, their actions making these things happen across the district. I do believe that parents are ultimately our students' first teachers, and we need to listen very closely to their expectations and their opinions, and do as best we can to incorporate their desires into how we are serving their students. Commute by, working with, I think, community was the last one. Since assuming the, the role of interim superintendent in February, I have focused on re-engaging with our community partners, especially those groups that do not necessarily have students in our, our school district. I have been immersing myself with the Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce, getting to know officials through the Town of Monument. This Saturday, I had the pleasure of speaking with the Kiwanis. So I value community partnerships and listening to our community with students in our schools and those without is very, very important to me.
What are the most significant challenges facing student learning and academic success in Lewis Palmer District 38, and how should the district respond?
There are multiple challenges that we face in public education today. In our school district, our compensation structure continues to be a significant challenge. And as I mentioned in an earlier question, our team is constantly looking for innovative and creative solutions to continue to raise our pay for our employees because their results with student learning are outstanding, and we continue to not be performing at a compensation level competitive with our peers. So as we look to retain our high-quality staff, this will continue to be something that we will focus on. Our students are coming to us with more and more challenges, and so this also is something that we have been focusing on as a team, making sure that not only are we prioritizing compensation for our staff, but support for our staff as well through professional development, giving them the most up-to-date strategies and information that will help them be successful with their students, whether it be instructional strategies, but also supporting students with any type of affective needs that they may have so that they can be successful in the classroom. And we do this all by partnering with our parents. Our parents know the most about their students and how we can best connect with them and reach them academically. As a board, along with the superintendent, we'll continue to prioritize those actions specifically within our strategic plan. One of the activities that the board recently discussed in a strategic planning session was the implementation of training for all of our staff next year on youth mental health first aid. So that is something that we will be rolling out next year specifically to help with some of these challenges, and we would love to have parents involved in that process as well.
How would you describe your leadership style? What are your core strengths, and what are the areas you're continuing, continuing to
I would I would categorize my leadership style as high trust, high empowerment, and results-oriented. I have been told by many that they see a unique strength in me, that I very much believe in lifting up others. I take great pride in identifying the strengths in others and leveraging their strengths to help us elevate as a district. So hiring the right people, putting them in the right positions, helping them plan for their future success, and identifying professional development pathways so that we have a leadership pipeline from our paraprofessionals to potentially become teachers, to our principals exploring opportunities for district leadership. I'm very proud that, over the course of a long career in public education, there are many, many people I can point to who are now successful leaders, that I've had a small part in helping them identify a potential leadership opportunity and pursue the next phase in their career. So as part of being a high-trust leader, I, again, hire people who have expertise and then trust them to do their job, but also hold them accountable, knowing that in the role of superintendent, I am ultimately the one accountable for all of the district operations. To that end, I'm very results-focused. I have extensive experience with strategic planning and leading teams across all district departments, so a lot of experience with the academic side of our organization, but also quite a bit of experience working with teams on the operational side as well. And a lot of the work that I have done has been identifying key performance indicators, helping teams track their progress, and a goal for next school year is that we would implement a public dashboard that we would be able to transparently communicate our results out to our community so that they can also help hold us accountable for those results.
Thank you. So we are about halfway through our questions and about halfway through our time. Okay.
We're right on track. So reflecting on your recent leadership experience in D-38 or elsewhere, what lessons have shaped your current approach?
Having applied for the superintendent position this past spring and not being selected has given me a great opportunity to reflect on my core values and to recommit to serving in this role well and staying committed for the long term. I have learned to not take my own leadership strengths and my core values for granted, and to leverage them through perseverance, through a commitment to students, through integrity, by leading by example. And this past year has really taught me a lot about what it means to have leadership stamina. I believe that I have done that well, and it has not necessarily been easy at times, but I'm proud that I'm sitting here today. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with each of you today, and I'm very hopeful that I can continue to learn and grow as your selected superintendent moving forward.
Okay. How do you assess your own effectiveness and that of your leadership team? And then the second part of that question is, what indicators will help you know you are succeeding
My primary way to assess my effectiveness is by asking for feedback. I do that in one-on-one conversations, but we also implement district-wide surveys that help us know if we are meeting expectations of our students, our staff, and our community. We look very closely at those survey results and use them intentionally for planning for improvement. This year, we instituted a district services survey for the very first time, and this is a survey that is implemented with our employees focused on how our district leadership team is serving our schools and teams. And it looks at, are we accessible? Are we accurate? Are we timely? Is it a nice experience to deal with us when we ask for something or someone asks something of us? And so in year zero, our first year of implementation of that survey, we are setting some specific goals, and we'll continue to hopefully improve in each of those areas as we move forward. I have, I very much value feedback, and feedback that is honest. I subscribe to Jim Collins' theories in Good to Great and needing to know the brutal facts so that we can get better and eventually become excellent. And so as superintendent, I would initiate 360 surveys as part of the evaluation process for myself, sharing those results with the Board of Education. But there is also an appetite among our executive leadership team to get that feedback as well because our internal customers are who we serve so that they can serve our students as best they can. It is our job to do our very best to provide the most outstanding service to our frontline workers.
Okay, thank you. Briefly explain how Colorado's state funding model impacts Lewis Palmer School District, and how would you navigate those financial realities?
Briefly.
There's the answer.
Mr. Ridgeway's here.
So as you know, we operate in a very complex, with a very complex state funding formula in Colorado, where we are provided state funding based on a multitude of factors, including our student population, as well as our population demographic. And so because of all of those factors, Lewis Palmer School District receives less than many surrounding school districts. And to make it more challenging, we have not been successful in pursuing additional local funding from our community for many years. And so this is absolutely an ongoing challenge for us, and it requires us to be innovative, creative, and very efficient in how we serve our students. We need to continue to build trust with our community, and we do that through constant transparency and communication, as well as feedback cycles like you asked about earlier. And it's something that sets us apart from other school districts, but it's also something that we can be proud of, that we are using our dollars to the best of our ability by still providing an exceptional education experience for our students.
Would you read it one more time because I may have missed something in that?
If I have Miss Up Church do it.
Oh, Miss Up Church. Actually, I think you did. I said, briefly explain how Colorado's state funding model impacts Lewis Palmer School District, and how would you navigate those financial realities?
Yeah, I think just being open as well to creative solutions while having a local investment through mill levy or bond dollars is always helpful. I think we need to continue to think creatively so that we can continue to meet the needs of our students on a daily
Okay, we are at 12:43, although we've, as Board members have eaten up a little bit of time, and we are at question number 14. If you had to summarize your core leadership strength in one sentence, this'll be a quick one, what would it be?
I take great pride in maximizing the strengths of others.
Lewis Palmer needs a superintendent who can unify, inspire, and strategically guide the district forward. How would you approach this responsibility in your first year?
What I have tried to do since reassuming the interim role in February is to focus completely on relationship building. So with our students, with our staff, the community, our families, I have the ability to build very authentic and genuine relationships with individual people. As a relater, one of my, actually, my top number-one strength, if you've taken the StrengthsFinder, is relator. And it's about genuinely investing in others, authentically knowing others, listening, and then acting upon commitments and following through. So building trust, building relationships, listening, fully understanding all of the complex challenges that we face as a district, also though, celebrating all of the wonderful successes. And I think that's something, while we do a lot of that, and especially kudos to our Director of Communications, who is constantly telling our wonderful stories through social media, we can always do more. We can always do more to celebrate and recognize all of the good things happening across our district. So part of my strategy would be elevating recognition through additional pursuing of awards for our school district. It has been a while since we have had a Teacher of the Year finalist, and I would love to see that be something that we have every school year. We have many teachers who deserve that honor, as just one example. Inspiring, you know, you asked about how would I inspire Miss Up Church. I think my best strategy for inspiring is being a role model, doing the work, caring about people, following through on my commitments, being a leader who models integrity, respect, valuing others. And again, I think it's inspiring when we can celebrate all of the successes, the wonderful things, successes of our students, the wonderful successes of our staff.
Dr. Shane?
Okay, so it's my turn. What distinguishes you as the right leader for D-38 at this time, particularly when it comes to making decisions under pressure?
What distinguishes me is that I am fully committed to this community and this school district. I spoke about my journey this year in reflecting on my core values, and I believe that my values align very much with the values we've identified as a school district and You asked, what distinguishes me as a leader, and you asked about decision-making.
Yeah, about making decisions under pressure.
Mm-hmm. I have to do that every day. Sometimes, those decisions have to be made very quickly, usually when there's a safety concern at hand, but even then, I include the experts within our team who can help make those decisions very quickly and accurately. We've had a couple of instances just recently where we've had to prioritize student safety, make quick decisions, and I can take a very directive approach when I need to in those situations so that decisions are not delayed. When possible, I prefer a collaborative decision-making approach, and we've made some significant decisions as a leadership team recently as well. One such was working with the entire principal team and the instructional leaders across the district to refocus on developing as instructional leaders, and we talked quite extensively about what that would mean, what training would be needed, working on timelines for implementation, so gathering feedback and input from all those involved in decisions whenever possible. I have been told that I am a decisive leader, but again, I do like to do it collaboratively, but I understand that ultimately, the decisions that are made are my responsibility.
As an internal candidate, how will you bring fresh and innovative thinking to the superintendent role while preparing students for the future, even when you may be met with, you may meet some resistance along the way?
We take great pride in tradition in Lewis Palmer School District, and it is something that is unique and something to celebrate, and I highly value our tradition of excellence here. And I have quite a bit of experience, I'll be starting my 27th year serving in public education next school year. I have quite a bit of experience prior to my role here in the district with leading innovative programs. I, as a principal, in order to compete with incoming charter schools in my school neighborhood, we researched and implemented a specific school model that would be something unique to serve families. I have experience serving through opening a school that was focused on integrating the performing arts at the elementary level. I have experience with many, supporting many different types of charter schools, and I look forward to continuing the partnership, to fostering the partnership that we have with Monument Academy. I have experience with early college schools, with online schools, with all types of programs across preschool through college-level programming. So I am excited to hear from our staff and our community about what are the desires of our community as we take Lewis Palmer School District into the next decade, making sure that we are meeting the demands of our students, and also being competitive because neighboring districts, as we talked about, have less funding challenges than we do, and we need to be very cognizant of what those opportunities are that they may be providing students that we aren't yet, and also evaluating And also evaluating current programming and deciding if current programming is still meeting our student needs.
In your first 90 days, how will you, how will you stabilize district leadership and strengthen staff engagement and morale? And how will you ensure that the decisions remain student-centered amid political, political or community pressure?
So as you'll see in my entry plan, I'm just approaching 90 days. And immediately upon the transition that we experienced in January, I focused my attention on our principal leadership team, as well as our, our district leadership team to prioritize first steps for where we want to go as a district next. We talked about what's working well, what do we want to continue, what do we need to change course on, and what do we need to start doing? And what I heard loud and clear was we need a laser focus on student achievement and instructional leadership. And we've already begun to do that through creating professional development plans for our teams for next school year, resetting our instructional framework, being present in schools. So our entire leadership team has focused on presence with staff, with teachers. And, and I have spent a significant amount of time these past three months in classrooms, re-engaging with students and understanding where we are with our instruction. I will also mention that I recognize that if I were to earn the position of superintendent moving forward, that while I've had some practice last spring and this spring as well, it will be a new role for me and a great responsibility. And so I have, have had the opportunity to have a seat at the table with the superintendents in the Pikes Peak region this spring. I very much appreciate our collegial relationship and their support and mentorship as peers. And I also have engaged with and identified a retired superintendent from the region who has agreed to mentor me to help support me being successful in this role if I were to be honored to serve as superintendent.
What do you see as the most pressing challenges that students face in achieving academic success? And how do we address them together at the district level?
When I think about this question, I think of two extremes, really. We have students who come to us who have challenges. They may struggle academically. They may have learning disabilities. English may not be their first language. They may have some social, emotional challenges. And so with those students, we need to do everything we can to identify where their gaps are and put supports into place to help them catch up and help them meet their individual needs. I have experience, a lot of experience, leading special education teams, our multilingual team, teams that focus on best utilizing our Title I funding, which supports students in poverty. And so helping identify those interventions and strategies that are most proven to help students who are struggling. We, I'm proud that we have been able to implement over the course of the last four years, a new intervention program at our middle and high school. This is a program that we were able to utilize grant dollars to purchase and then train teachers to support students who are not reading at grade level in the secondary grades. And we have seen some great early success from that work. The other side of things are the students who are very high-performing. And I think one of the challenges that I hear a lot about is the pressures that our students face. There is a lot of pressure to perform well and at high levels. And I have just recently heard through the, through the listening tours that we've been implementing, a great concern about our student well-being because of some of the pressures that we put upon them. And these are pressures that we could, we control as a school district. We can impact. We have unnecessarily put pressures onto our students that are harmful in some cases. And so a priority for me will be examining how our students are feeling, hearing from our students about how we can support them to be successful, but without as much undue pressure. This can be done through examining our grading practices, as one example. Making sure that our grading practices are fair, that are focused on student learning as the ultimate goal.
What benchmarks or key indicators would you use to measure your success as superintendent at one, three, and five years?
Some of the things I've talked about in this regard are feedback, feedback from staff, feedback from students and families on my performance, my ability to build and sustain positive relationships and trust, perception of transparency with all of our stakeholders, our instructional outcomes with students. So really, all of the metrics that we have identified within our strategic plan. Students will be learning and thriving. We will have better retention rates with our staff than we have now. Our community trust will have improved. Our communication with each of our stakeholder groups will have improved. And I would seek feedback on each of these areas, again, through a 360 process, but also through regular and ongoing interactions with each of our stakeholder groups. I would also heavily rely on the Board of Education. I know that the Board of Education will look different three and five years from now. And so I would see a measure of my success being able to sustain the great working relationship that I believe I currently have with the Board of Education, to continue to collaborate and work together to identify the expectations of our community, and then deliver upon those.
I'll do the last one if you want. Yep.
Sure. And so this is the last question. What approach would you take to collaboratively develop effective policies around student cellphone use with input from staff, students, and families?
I, along with others, also read The Anxious Generation this year. And I know that's been a book study that's been ongoing across our district with, with several groups. And we have received interest from our parents in exploring a policy that would look at cellphone use with our students. I would approach this very much in the same way that I've approached other district committees during my time here in Lewis Palmer School District. So convening a group which would include students, teachers, support staff, parents. And I think in this case, it would be important to include content experts on technology and mental health. This is something that is important. We have heard from our teachers and our students and our community that this is something important for us to look at. And I would make this a priority to launch this work at the start of next school year.
Okay, so in closing, we have one more question. And that is, do you have any questions for the board?
I will ask, what do you, what would, if I were to be successful in the role one, three, and five years from now, what would I be doing, in your opinion?
Do you want to take that one, Mr. Schwartz?
Sure. Sorry, Amy. Sure. If you were to earn this position, as you so eloquently stated, in three to fi, in three and five years, this district would continue to be a district of distinction, provided the state still had that metric. This district's physical safety record would remain unblemished. This district would have a teacher pay schedule that while maybe not in the 90th percentile, was be competitive enough to help us manage our retention. This would be a district, or would continue to be a district, where employees and students and families want to be. And finally, you would have a deep team of leaders and staff, such that if you were to win the lottery and step away at a moment's notice, no one would ever know.
I appreciate all of that.
Thank you. Anybody want to add anything?
No, I think...
No, you got it.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And I would just add, and maintaining the good relationship that the board has with the superintendent position. Because I know that we do things a little different than some other districts. We like to be a little more involved, and we want to keep that close working relationship.
I guess, may I add one thing to my description?
Yes.
I was under 60 seconds, wasn't I?
Go for it. Kidding.
You would be doing it with love and joy, not because you had to or you felt obligated.
Yeah, that's good. I have felt that this spring, even with a lot of complex challenges, including snow days. It has truly been an honor and joy to serve.
Looks like we may have one today.
And you would be feeling okay, even with all this work. It's really important that you'd be able to do it and still take care of yourself and your family.
We are at an hour and six minutes. So if there's any closing remarks you have that you want to make within the last 10 minutes, feel free. Or I guess nine minutes, or you...
I just want to thank you all again for the opportunity. I don't take this opportunity for granted. I am confident that I can step into this role and do a great job as I learn the role. And, and I want to be the best superintendent that I can possibly be. So I appreciate your willingness to support whoever the next superintendent is that will step into this role. If it is me, just know that I am fully committed to this district. And I am very much looking forward to leading, continuing to lead here in the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will be in recess for, till 1:30.
No recess, Bill.
See you on the monkey bars.
Indoor recess.
Who has yard duty, probably? You have yard duty, very recent.
You are the question.
People can fight. Nice to have a break.